Welcome back, and officially, this is week 14, because we missed last week for Easter, First Fruits. And here we are, coming back. And we're just picking up right where we left off with Thyatira, and picking up at verse 24 and 25. Now, let's go ahead and start with a word of prayer, and we'll just jump right in. Or if anybody has questions or review, we can also do that. So let's go ahead and pray. Lord God, thank you for another time to gather together in your name, to study your word, the revelation that you gave to your servant John, and that Father, 2,000 years later, through faithful preservation, we have your word in front of us. And I pray for your blessing, just as this Revelation promises. I pray for your blessing on each of us tonight as we study it. That your Spirit within us would guide and direct us in all truth. And what's more is application of your word to our lives. That we can translate these words spoken in a specific time to a people in a place far away, that they can be translated into our own lives, to challenge us, to grow us more into the image of your Son. I pray that this time will glorify you, that we would worship you in our hearts and with our minds. We pray all these things in Jesus's name. Amen. Included a little hermeneutics in a prayer. There's nothing wrong with that. All right. So I'm gonna pick up here, so verse 23. Just a little bit of context. Okay, 22. "Behold, I will throw her on a bed of sickness, and those who commit adultery with her into great tribulation, unless they repent of her deeds; and I will kill her children with pestilence; and all the churches will know that I am he who searches the minds and hearts." You know what? I don't even think it's fair to start like that. Let's read the whole letter, just to gain a greater context. Amen? Everybody? Yes, all right. So it's been a couple weeks since we've read this, right? All right, and verse 18, Revelation, chapter 2. "And to the angel of the church at Thyatira write, 'The Son of God, who has eyes like a flame of fire, and his feet are like burnished bronze,' says this: 'I know your deeds, and your love, and faith, and service, and perseverance, and that your deeds of later are greater than at first; but I have this against you, that you tolerate the woman Jezebel, who calls herself a prophetess, and she teaches and leads my bond servants astray, so that they commit acts of immorality and eat things sacrificed to idols.' I gave her time to repent, and she does not want to repent of her immorality. Behold, I will throw her on a bed of sickness, and those who commit adultery with her into great tribulation, unless they repent of her deeds; and I will kill her children with pestilence; and all the churches will know that I am he who searches the minds and hearts; and I will give to each one of you according to your deeds. But I say to you, the rest who are in Thyatira, who do not hold this teaching, who have not known the deep things of Satan, as they call them, I place no other burden on you. Nevertheless, what you have, hold fast until I come. He who overcomes, and he who keeps my deeds until the end, to him I will give authority over the nations; and he shall rule them with a rod of iron, as the vessels of the potter are broken to pieces, as I also have received authority from my Father in heaven; and I will give him the morning star. He who has an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the churches." All right. So obviously, the main culprit here is Jezebel, and how she has led some of these individuals at Thyatira astray, committing acts of immorality, so sexual immorality, and eating food sacrificed to idols. And so what we had talked about a couple weeks ago was just the main cultic practices, that this was common, whether it be with the Imperial Cult or some of the local deities, activities at the local pagan temple, much of which that these Gentiles would have grown up with, just as common as growing up in church, and that level of familiarity. You know, going back to maybe your old church, and singing hymns and everything else, and just kind of, "Oh, that was nice." I mean, imagine for these pagans, that they, you know, walking by the temple, and there's a certain song being sung, and they're just kinda humming along with it. Like, "Oh yeah, that's familiar, that familiar tune." Or, "Oh, that was a good party that one time," when they were worshiping on the solar, you know, on the equinox, or, you know, solstice, or something like that. And so that's, I mean, it's just a completely different mindset than what we have, right? Now, those feelings of nostalgia, you know, the fondness of, you know, growing up and having these celebrations and different things like that, that's exactly what they would have had. And even though as they came to Christ, that doesn't take away their memory for those things of before Christ, especially things that they did not see as bad or evil until after coming to Christ. I mean, that's a huge departure, isn't it? I think most of us who grow up here in the United States, we kinda have this understanding, like especially those teenage years, we know when we're doing wrong. But what we're talking about here is something almost completely different. It's like you're growing up in a culture of worshiping idols, committing acts of sexual immorality, and it's good. It's, I mean, you are showing your devotion to certain deities, like a model citizen. And as you're giving gifts to these temples and participating in acts of worship. And imagine, maybe as a parent, devoting your own son or daughter to the temple at the age of 12 or 13. And everybody is looking at you as, "Oh, you are a model citizen." Everybody getting the picture? I mean, it's just completely, it's night and day. But you have all of these people who have heard the gospel, and they believe, but that's their background. And the problem is moving forward within that culture. And somebody comes along and maybe is saying what everybody kinda hopes is true, is, "Hey, wait a second. We can worship Dionysius and Jesus. Or we can just worship Jesus, but you know, it's okay to do these other things that we grew up with. It's all right." Because look, everybody else, this is the mores, this is the morality of that culture. That's what they grew up with. Even though it's so completely different than our own, that's what they grew up with. And so now, we have this synthesizing of these two cultures. Okay, so, so yeah, this is just, I mean, this is, this is big. This is really getting to the heart of what does it mean to be in the world and not of the world? And coming out of a former life and being a new creation in Christ. The old things have passed away, and now we're taking on Christ and moving forward. And so here we have a Jezebel, who is leading some of these people astray by accommodating with the local culture. And which, for many of them, being Gentile, they would have been like, "Hey, that sounds like a great idea, because I know it's harmless, it's fine. So we can eat the meat sacrificed to idols, it's okay. I still worship Jesus, I'll be there on Sunday." Or even in the context of sexual morality. Because remember, it's a completely different culture. I mean, we'll see what the next five years look like here in the United States. But like, at this point, it's almost a completely different culture. Oh, I'm being recorded, right? Oh, man. Okay, so verse 24 and 25. Let's zero in right here. "But I say to you, the rest who are in Thyatira, who do not hold this teaching, who have not known the deep things of Satan, as they call them, I place no other burden on you. Nevertheless, what you have, hold fast until I come." Okay, so on those in Thyatira, who have not been led astray by the Jezebel party, so we'll just kinda call them the Jezebel party, Christ lays no additional burden except that you hold on to what you have until I come. So to combine the two verses in this way answers the question, what burden? Which would go unanswered if verse 25 is separated and introduces a new idea. "Those who have remained faithful at Thyatira are described as not having learned Satan's so-called deep secrets." This phrase is normally taken in one of two ways. Some feel that it's more than a sarcastic reversal of their main slogan. Claiming to know the deep secrets of God, they are told that the deep secrets they claim to know are really the deep secrets of Satan. So basically, the idea... So it's more likely, however, that knowing Satan's deep secrets is a reference to the view that in order to appreciate fully the grace of God, one must first plumb the depths of evil. Because remember, knowledge, right? Knowledge is power. And so for them, this is basically the roots of narcissism, where there is this salvation through knowledge. And the more you know, gnosis, the more spiritual you are. And there's even to this point where there's a separation of the physical from the intellectual and spiritual. And so the physical things don't matter. But then, it's not even, don't matter as in like, you know, ignoring those things. Actually, a lot of times, you would see them indulging in those things for the experience of it. See how sinister this philosophy is? So later narcissism boasted that it was precisely by entering into the stronghold of Satan that believers could learn the limits of his power and emerge victorious on the basis that a believer's spirituality is unaffected by what is done with the body. So Jezebel could argue that the Thyatiran Christians ought to take part in the pagan guild feast, even if they were connected with the deep secrets of Satan, and thus prove how powerless is evil to alter the nature of grace. I don't know about you, but that sounds like a heresy if I ever heard one, right? Amen? Yes. So, and so, you know, when we're talking about these deep secrets, right? Now, this goes into like, there was mystery religions within, you know, Greek culture, with actually, many of the cultures, where you would be working into that. And the deeper you go into it, depending on sacrifices and acts of devotion or things like that, then the more you move into it, the more you are learning the deep secrets, right? And so that's why I like, wanna present both of these ideas. Is that either way, you have this, either a synthesizing of what is around them, or there is just this kind of turning it on its head of like, really just flexing the grace of God to explore these things and prove, "Hey, I can do this, I'm still saved, but now I know the tricks of the enemy." Yeah. But you know what? I'm glad we're reading this, because we can call that out. Because how many times, maybe in our minds, that we're just kinda playing with fire? That, you know what? His grace is sufficient not to overcome it, but to get through it. "Boy, I just gotta really get through this. I gotta just indulge in this to come out on the other side, but his grace is sufficient to cover what I've just done." Those are the lies of the enemy. We're not better for having sinned. That is what is like waging war upon our spirits, upon our souls. So the idea is to avoid sin, to overcome it by putting it down, not by indulging in it. And I think a lot of times, we don't really talk about it like that. We make much of the grace of God, but not of the killing of sin and ridding it of our lives. And actually, just getting through a period of unleavened bread. And that was the whole idea, is to, you know, at Passover, you're going through the house, and you're getting all the leaven out of the house. And for seven days, you are not consuming any yeast or leaven at all. And it's like this period where, and it's, it sounds funny. You're like, "Oh, can't have like a loaf of bread, you know, a piece of bread or something like that." And, but it's a reminder of, "Oh no, I'm not doing that." But then again, where's the sin in our lives? Because a little leaven, leaven's the whole lump, right? Where are those little ones? Maybe I've gotten rid of all the big ones, but where are the little sins in my life that I tolerate? And those are just as dangerous. Those are just as distracting and disqualifying, or however you wanna frame that. They detract us from the will of God. It is not God's will for us to sin. So here, we have a group that is learning the deep secrets of Satan. I mean, just full on, like, I mean, you know, it's, so you have the Jezebel party, and how many of them are just going headlong into it? So then here we have the challenge to overcome. "He who overcomes, and he who keeps my deeds until the end, to him I will give authority over the nations; and he shall rule them with a rod of iron, as the vessels of the potter are broken to pieces, as I also have received authority from my Father, and I will give him the morning star. He who has an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the churches." So zeroing in on verses 26 and 27 there. "In the first three letters, the exhortation, 'He who has an ear,' preceded the concluding promise. Beginning with the Thyatiran letter, the order is changed, and the exhortation follows the promise." A scholar named Hemmer notes two additional changes in the form of the letter. "First, only here is the final promise made dependent on a double condition; and two, only here and at Pergamum, in chapter 2, verse 17, are two apparently distinct promises made to the victor, each separately introduced by 'I will give.' Authority over the nations and the morning star are promised to the overcomer, that is, the one who does the will of Christ until the end. It is by faithful allegiance to the cause of Christ that believers overcome in the hostile environment of pagan values and practices." Wow. I mean, what a challenge. I don't know about you, but I could probably read that paragraph every morning and just be like, "Yes, let's do this." I mean, because like, and that's the challenge we need. And here in the United States, I think it is just so dangerously subtle. Because instead of pagan temples everywhere, it's these other ideals, whether it's just prosperity, luxury. Well, I mean, we could name any number of things. I mean, lust. It could be all kinds of things. And that's the challenge, is where we're at in our environment. Is this Thyatira? No, it's not. And really, understanding what we're reading in context, we know that all of these places were in Turkey 2,000 years ago. But as we're reading it, this is the prayer, that we're translating this into our own lives. And so we can read this and be like, "Okay, what is the landscape? What is the environment around us? Where are we seeing this compromise with the world? And where does that immediately get called out? In Scripture. Maybe there are things that are pagan, or come from pagan backgrounds, and they're kind of making their way into the church or into our own lives. What is this, the deep secrets of Satan? What does that look like in our life? Where does a compromise exist in our lives, in our families, in church? What does that look like? And I think that's something that like, I mean, we just need to be intentional about and pray through. Ask the Holy Spirit to reveal that to us about ourselves. Don't take the easy way and be like, "Oh, they're doing it wrong." Let's look at our own lives first. And all with that goal of showing our allegiance to Jesus. And remember, as we've already seen in a number of these letters, it's the Imperial Cult that kind of seems to be public enemy number one here, Christian enemy number one, so far in the book of Revelation. What does, what would an Imperial Cult look like here in the United States? No comments, please. Or for the next couple years. And so, so, but it's still, it's something that we can be challenged by. Verses 26 and 27 are a free rendering of Psalm, chapter 2, verses 8 and 9, which had been interpreted messianically as early as the first century B.C. So let's go ahead, let's go ahead and go to Psalm 2. And I know we have read this a few weeks back, but it's just so good. So Psalm 2. "Why are the nations in an uproar, and the peoples devising a vain thing? The kings of the earth take their stand, and the rulers take counsel together against Yahweh and against his anointed, saying, 'Let us tear their fetters apart and cast away their cords from us.' He who sits in the heavens laughs; Yahweh scoffs at them; then he will speak to them in his anger and terrify them in his fury, saying, 'But as for me, I have installed my king upon Zion, my holy mountain; I will surely tell of the decree of Yahweh. He said to me, 'You are my son; today I have begotten you. Ask of me, and I will surely give the nations as your inheritance, and the very ends of the earth as your possession. You shall break them with a rod of iron and shall shatter them like earthenware,' or pottery, if you will. Now therefore, O kings, show discernment; take warning, O judges of the earth; worship Yahweh with reverence and rejoice with trembling; do homage to the Son, that he not become angry, and you perish in the way; for his wrath may soon be kindled; how blessed are all who take refuge in him.'" The translation that I always read from is New American Standard, 1995. If you care. Man, that Psalm is so good. And I mean, I think you can just see like, Jesus 2.0, if you will, like, through that. And I think it's always something to remember when you're reading the Gospels, and you're reading Jesus Meek and Mild, to maybe like, every time you do that, read Psalm 2 for the balance of the matter here, right? Just to remember who it is you're dealing with and praying through, praying in the name of, and taking the name on. That's a big deal. That's who we're talking about here. That's Jesus. And it's Jesus who died on the cross to atone for your sins. So the King of Kings, first time through, laying down his life. Like, he's the one praying, "Father, is there another way? Like, I know how this is all gonna end. I know, King of Kings, Lord of Lords, don't I have to go through this in the garden?" Right? When he's praying? "Oh, your will be done." Right? That is his prayer, and that's what he follows through, the Father's will, that he would go through the cross. And it's just amazing to think about that in balance of everything else that we're reading, and everything we're going to read in Revelation, is that this is Jesus. This is the fullest picture of Jesus. And it's the same authority that Jesus is speaking to these churches. And I think a lot of times, we might be a little put off because we're like, "Whoa, he's bringing pestilence upon the kids? He's bringing this level of judgment? I mean, isn't he the one that just said, 'Hey, he who is without sin casts the first stone?'" Why isn't he saying that in all these letters? It's not the case. This is the risen Lord. This is, he has been glorified. He is sitting at the right hand of the Father. And when he comes back, he is making all things right. And you are with him and showing your allegiance to him, or you're an enemy. And there's enemies in the gates, within the gates here. And that is what Jesus is sending these letters out. And he's calling people to task. He's like, "Oh, you have used my name, you have claimed allegiance, but your lives are far from me." And he talks about this. There's different teachings on this, in the Gospels. "Get away from me, I never knew you." And so as we are working through this, we shouldn't be surprised at this. But here we have Psalm 2 being referenced. "The Psalms of Solomon, written probably between 70 and 40 B.C., say of the son of David, who is to rule over Israel, 'He shall destroy the pride of the sinners as a potter's vessel; with a rod of iron he shall break in pieces all their substance.'" And that's the Psalms of Solomon, chapter 7, or Psalm 17, verse 23 and 24. "It was a regular feature of Jewish eschatology that the followers of the Messiah would share in his rule. This feature carried over into Christian thought." Did you know that? Let's go to 1 Corinthians 6. Starting at verse one. Does any one of you, when he has a case against his neighbor? So this is Paul writing to the Corinthian church. When he has a case against his neighbor, dare to go to law before the unrighteous and not before the saints? Or do you not know that the saints will judge the world? If the world is judged by you, are you to, are you not competent to constitute the smallest law courts? Do you not know that we will judge angels how much more matters of this life? Wow, that was a part of Paul's theology. Judging the world, even judging angels? We can also look at Revelation, chapter five. Yes, we're reading ahead. Just a little bit. Revelation five. I gotta tell you, I cannot wait until we get to chapter five. It's just, this is just going to be a worship service for like two hours. And if it goes over, I don't even know, it's just, it's exciting. But let's, let's just start at verse eight. And this will be a little bit of a teaser for us, eight through 10. When he had taken the book, the four living creatures and the 24 elders fell down before the lamb, each one holding a harp and golden bowls full of incense, which are the prayers of the saints. And they sang a new song, saying, worthy are you to take the book and to break its seals. For you were slain and purchased for God with your blood, men from every tribe and tongue and people and nation. You have made them to be a kingdom and priest to our God, and they will reign upon the earth. Man. So we have followers of the Messiah sharing in his final rule. Let's see here. I just want to include another note here with the broken pottery. So the passages to Thyatira in Revelation about fire, fine bronze, a rod of iron and broken pottery could be word pictures of the familiar blacksmith and pottery trades in Thyatira. So once again, everything that is being spoken here is like of an intimate knowledge of the industry and the livelihoods of the people of Thyatira. I mean, I guess it would have been like kind of a double whammy if you were, you know, in Thyatira, adhered to this Jezebel and you were the potter. Right? And he's talking about broken, you know, earthenware and things like that. You're like, you know, you're like starting to break out in a cold sweat and you're just like, oh, that's right at me. I mean, imagine like, I mean, hearing this for the first time and like the deep secrets and you know, this is something that, you know, like, maybe it wasn't a, it was a secret among, you know, a group of you, like in the church at Thyatira? And you know, like nod and be like, yeah, you know what? Like we participated in that last weekend and that was really interesting. We, we had a really good debriefing after and just talking through that and what we learned from that experience. And, you know, and maybe there was a few scriptures along with it, right? Bible study. And so, you know, but, but then there's this letter from John and you're like, oh yeah, I remember John. I haven't seen him in a while. You know, it was the old guy that would come in and give us some wisdom and talk about the days of walking with Jesus. And he starts going through this letter. And all of a sudden it's hitting you right between the eyes. Like, oh, oh, broken pottery and adhering to, you know, this teachings of Jezebel. I mean, I just had meat sacrificed to idols for dinner last night. And you know, that other part, like, you know, I guess that goes into like last weekend, but you know, oh my goodness, I, I thought I was doing okay. I thought, I mean, like, this is, this is how I'm following God. I mean, so, so, I mean, imagine like that's somebody sitting, listening to this letter for the first time. And they're feeling that burden to repent. Cause it's addressed to them. Man, wow. So Christ promises the overcomers that they will rule the nations with an iron scepter. The verb means to shepherd. And should be taken in the sense of wielding the shepherd's staff or club. So the iron scepter may have been an oak club capped with iron to ward off the attacks of marauding beast. So is everybody familiar with that? There's the shepherd's crook and the, so thy rod and thy staff, they comfort me, right? Psalm 23? Yeah. So the, the rod part is what we're talking about here. And that was actually like a heavy club to hit. I mean, you know, so think about David out there in the wilderness, there's lions and tigers and bears, oh my, and you knew where that was going. And so, you know, but like, that heavy club is there to face it. He's not running away. I mean, if you run away, you're going to get caught. Or you're just hoping, you know, you trip the sheep running next to you. I don't know. And so everybody saw that with the National Park Service. Everybody see that? Like they actually issued, like said, hey, if you see a bear, don't trip the person you're with. So that's a thing. So don't do that. That's not, that's not good. But you know, here you have this heavy club so that if an animal does attack, you have to confront that animal. And you have to put that animal down and you're not just doing it with a staff. I mean, you might be like, stay away. But with this heavy club, and a lot of times it would have, you know, a piece of iron or something like that, something jagged, that would be a weapon. And that was your, that was pretty much your only weapon, right? Unless you're good with a sling and stone like David. But this is the idea for the, the club that the shepherds would have. So that is the word that's being used here. In Revelation 12, five and chapter 19, verse 15, the prerogative of ruling, shepherding the nations belongs to the conquering Christ. A share in this rule is promised to the overcomers in Thyatira. So we have Jesus ruling the world, but now here we have this promise to the overcomers to share in that rule. So the description of this rule as the shattering of the potter's vessel speaks of the absolute power of the victorious Christ and his followers over the rebellious nations. The concluding clause of the verse picks up from verse 26. Christ will give authority to the overcomer, just as he has received it from his father. It reflects the messianic, you are my son. Today I have become your father of Psalm, chapter two, or Psalm two, verse seven that we just read. Any questions on that? That's a, that's a really big concept if you've never heard that before. And all of a sudden, maybe you feel like, boy, those are some big shoes to fill. I got some growing to do. But I think that, that's where as a church, like if we're not teaching on the resurrection, if we're not teaching of what is to come in the next age, we're missing out. Because what are we left with is just getting through this life as unscathed as possible. But if you knew you were growing into something that you as a person, as an individual are getting carried into the world to come by our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. If maybe that's what's on the other side, right? And even as we talk about 1 Corinthians 15 and the resurrection, blessed are those who participate in the first resurrection. I mean, there's an idea where in that first resurrection, if you are chosen to be resurrected at that time, you participate with Jesus in the reclaiming of the earth. Wow, I mean, that's huge. And so, so we're not just killing time here until the resurrection, until we die and then look forward to the resurrection. What if? That is what is in front of us is to live out all of the gifts that God has given us to be faithful, whether it's one talent or five talents or 10 talents. Oh, some of those parables start to make sense, right? The kingdom parables. Maybe that's exactly what Jesus was getting at. He was preparing people for the kingdom to come. And not just the spiritual kingdom, but an actual physical kingdom. And that's what we get to grow into. That is what we have accepted as Jesus, not just as our Savior, but as our Lord. And if we can show our allegiance now, if we can live and grow in that in that faithfulness as the king is away and be faithful here with the talents that he's given us. When he comes back, how is he going to reward us? That's awesome. And there's a lot of smiles right here. Like there's some like deep thought going on, but then there's like some grins of like, oh, this, this whole Jesus thing got better. This is great. Question? Yep. Okay, so the question is, which is great because there's David, but then there's the camera. So just, that's all right. Everybody, if you're 14 weeks into this, you know how goofy I am. So, all right. So, so this is exciting because the question is, one, it just like, wow, deeds. I mean, you know, we've, most of our Christian experience, it's just kind of been like, no, 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 like deeds, not a factor here at all. But then we're like, oh, well, wait a second. What is this saying? How does that gel with everything else? Right? Is there anything else that I missed apart that? Oh, how do we overcome? Yeah, okay. Right? Yeah, so you know what? I'm going to, I'm going to address the overcoming first. So one of the things that Jesus says is that basically my burden is easy, my yoke is light. Right? And that was the whole, this was in the context of addressing the Pharisees. And so the Pharisees had all these religious rules and, I mean, you sneezed wrong or you sneezed on the Sabbath. Totally kidding. That's not a real thing. But like if you, you know, it's like, oh, you sinned, right? That was the thing. There was just this concept of sin. You were breaking God's commands, even though they weren't actually in Scripture, but it was somebody else's understanding of what Scripture says, yada, yada, yada. But then that totally applies, I think, to today. Because if, if following Christ is this drudgery, one, you got to check your heart. But the second thing, if you feel like everything you do is sin, then there's a problem. We need to reevaluate what is sin. And this isn't running into a Jezebel situation. I think a lot of times there's certain theological constructs out there that have made everything out of the selfish motivation of your heart. And so everything is bad. Everything you do is evil all the time. And that is not what Scripture says. That is not a burden for us to carry. God definitely described and said, what is sin? And everything else is not. The burden is easy, the yoke is light. But there are some very clear things that are wrong. And those are the things that we need to stick to. Anything happening to do with idols wrong. Have nothing to do with it. Anything with sexual immorality. Anything outside of the sexual ethic communicated in Scripture is wrong. It doesn't matter what culture says. It doesn't matter how much culture has changed. I mean, trust me, if you're like, Luke, this is being recorded on YouTube. I know it. And so, and, and as we're talking about this, remember that things were even more acceptable back then than it is today. And so just because we've had a cultural shift and just because maybe there are some people who know a little bit of Greek and they want to like twist some of these scriptures to make it sound something that it's not, there's a problem. And so a lot of these things that are very, very clear of what is right and what is wrong. But no, I mean, just because you forgot to do your daily quiet time, you're not in sin. It's okay. That's not a burden that you have to bear. Now, is it a great idea to read your Bible every day and to pray every day? And well, yeah, of course. Absolutely. But if it doesn't happen, you're not in sin. If you miss church on Sunday, that's not a sin. But don't forsake the gathering, right? And so maybe it's Sunday evening, maybe it's Monday, maybe who, whenever, get with other believers and rejoice in the Lord. I'm not telling you to skip on Sundays. I feel like for everything I have to say, I gotta like, well, Luke said. Mike's getting all kinds of emails in the morning. So, so it's important for us to understand that one, when we're talking about deeds, when we're talking about the deeds are important. They've always been important. And notice I'm saying like important and not necessary for salvation. But what we're running into here is a completely different framework of thought. Because in the ancient world and from an eastern perspective, what you said and what you did, like there was no abstract. Like if you said that you were a Christ follower, well, you've said that only because you were already living that. There was not this disjointed, I'm saying this, but I'm doing something different. What you do communicates your allegiance. It communicates who you are. You cannot say, I am X and then do Y. If you say, this is who you are, this is who you follow, then you are doing likewise. And we don't separate that now. But what about sin? Listen, as the Holy Spirit within you, right? You are called to pray and to ask the Lord to reveal that sin in your lives. And odds are throughout the day, you probably know when you're sinning and when you're not. You, the Lord has hardwired you with a conscience. Maybe that's the software, I don't know. But you have it. And so as you are going throughout and you have that kind of prick of conscience, then all of a sudden be obedient to that. But then also pray, like be observant. What is it? Is it something that I'm not doing? Right? So you have sins of commission, sins of omission, things that you're committing, things that you're not doing, you're omitting out of your life. So, oh, wait a second, I feel like I need to go help that person. I need to go share the gospel with that person. Now, I am not going to go so far as to say that like, just because you didn't listen to your conscience, that's a sin. But I'm going to encourage you, follow that. Do that, try it out, see what happens. And I guarantee you're probably going to see God work in your life. But once again, let's return back to the burden is easy, the yoke is light. If you were to comb through your day, how many pagan activities do you have involved? Probably not many. You could even just do the top 10 list, right? How many of those are you? How many of those are you breaking? Now, it's tax time, and I think there's maybe some elbow room there with trying to get away from some, you know, get away with some things. But, I'm totally kidding. I'm totally kidding. Come on. It's not stealing. It's your money. Just kidding, alright, alright, alright. Was there an amen? Okay, it's time for a break. But anyways, but really though, when we, when we pull this together, it, what we do and how we live is reflecting our allegiance to Christ. We need to read Scripture to understand what God defines as sin. And, and quit accepting cultural expectations as definitions. That's exactly what the Jewish people of the first century ran into, and that's what Jesus was rebuking all the religious leaders for. So, I would hate to perpetuate that 2,000 years later. I don't know, you know, it just, getting into this, it is really, it's exciting, it's challenging. And, I don't know. I mean, just in the same way you get excited of like, oh, get to rule and reign with Christ. But then you look at what's going on in these churches, and you can only imagine, just get a little bit of a glimpse of maybe the frustration that Jesus would have. You know, the one who laid his life down for each and every one of us. And, and even just kind of getting back and wrestling with the concept of what is sin. We've grown up in church culture, and we've been told what to do, what not to do. We have our own like cultural mores that we've accepted. And in the same, and this almost makes it like a little bit more like dangerous, because it's not as black and white as the pagan cultures. And so, for, for the Jewish people in Jesus's time, this is what they grew up with. They grew up with the Old Testament. They knew what God said. But then they've also had 500, 700 years of teachings, of traditions, of how to interpret God's Word, that they accepted as this super long list of what to do and what not to do. And so, the question I put to you is, if you were to read through the entire Bible, what would be sin and what would not be sin? What are those things that maybe, how does that translate in your life? And I think that there's, and, and you know, obviously, there's some issues, some core issues that get a lot more publicity, right? Because there's some very clear things that are sin, that try to get made not sin. But then, for a lot of us, how much have we just thought of as sin, but not thought critically about that? And, and, you know, socially unacceptable, or whatever else, but like, is it sin according to what God says? Now, I'll say that, but then we can also slide over into like, oh, wait a second. Once we realize what is sin and not sin, if it's not socially acceptable, are we still tarnishing the name of Christ within this culture? So, that's where you need to have discernment. And, if you ever travel to another country, be sensitive to that. And I think that's exactly, like, and once you kind of process that, you maybe have a little bit more of an understanding of how Paul is feeling as a Jew in the first century, from Tarsus, trained in Jerusalem, and traveling throughout the Mediterranean as a representative of Jesus Christ. And even coming into contact with all these different cultures, and explaining the way of Christ to them. There's a snippet of contextual studies for you. So, any questions before we move, move on? Yeah? Yeah, and I think we might have touched on this on a few of these. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Is, is there significance to the promises that are being kind of doled out to some of these different churches? And much like the rest of these letters, it's contextual. And that's, that's the theory, right? For Thyatira, it's the most insignificant city of the list of the seven. And look what's being promised to it. Authority over the nations. And I don't think that's a coincidence. And I, you know, if you go back, and it might be in some of the notes, but, you know, with some of the other promises, it just kind of ties in with local industry, with maybe their status and position, different things like that. And so, I think this big promise is because of the insignificance and the lack of influence that this church has. "The meek shall inherit the earth." There you go. Yep. So, yeah, great question. Anybody else? Alright. Verse 28, because this won't be contentious. "And I will give him the morning star." Everybody remember from a couple of weeks ago, right? The morning star. So, in addition to authority over the nations, the Overcomer is promised the morning star. "No completely satisfactory answer for this symbol has yet been offered." That's from Mount's, by the way. "Among the many suggestions one finds, one, an allusion to Lucifer" of Isaiah, chapter 14, verse 12. Everybody remember that one? So, let, let's go ahead and go to Isaiah just as a refresher. Even though we covered that a few weeks ago, Isaiah 14. So, did a brief, not really brief at all, excursus into the figure of Satan. See, verse 12 here. "How you have fallen from heaven, O star of the morning, sun of the dawn. You have been cut down to the earth. You have been weak, you have weakened the nations." So, "O star of the morning, sun of the dawn." So, the morning star there is thought to be metaphorical for Lucifer. Second option, Christ himself. And then this would refer to chapter 22, verse 16 of Revelation. I, verse 16, "I, Jesus, have sent my angel to testify to you these things for the churches. I am the root and the descendant of David, the bright morning star." So, here, Jesus is identifying as the bright morning star. So, that morning star is Venus. This is also where the name Lucifer comes from. But that's much later on. Third option, a reference to Daniel, chapter 12, verse 3, "and the immortality of the righteous." So, let's go to Daniel. Daniel, chapter 12. Starting at verse 1, "Now at that time, Michael the great prince, who stands guard over the sons of your people, will arise, and there will be a time of distress, such as never occurred since there was a nation until that time. And at that time, your people, everyone who is found written in the book, will be rescued. Many of those who sleep in the dust of the ground will awake, these to everlasting life, but the others to disgrace and everlasting contempt. Those who have insight will shine brightly like the brightness of the expanse of heaven, and those who lead the many to righteousness like the stars forever and ever." So, like the stars forever and ever. Fourth option, the dawn of eternal life. Fifth, a literal reference to the planet Venus. I mean, I don't know what you would do with a planet, but... Sixth, the Holy Spirit. A scholar by the name of Hemmer suggests rather tentatively that the author's mind may have passed from Psalm 2, verses 7 through 9, to Numbers, chapter 24, verse 17. So, let's go to Numbers. It's Bible bingo, right? Numbers 24. Let's see, verse 17. "I see him, but not now; I behold him, but not near. A star shall come forth from Jacob; a scepter shall rise from Israel, and shall crush through the forehead of Moab and tear down all the sons of Sheth." So, "A star shall come forth from Jacob." So, the rod or scepter in each passage symbolizes authority. "So, with its mention of a star, which then suggested the morning star, a local concept, whose significance may have now been forgotten." So, and we notice, and we know that like Venus was worshiped in different iterations, attributing to the god Apollo. So... Yeah. I really just, I wish I could give you a definitive answer on that one. And I only say this because I've read this numerous times, and I wish I knew. You know? And so, just reading through and Mount's, you know, kind of outlined these options, I thought this was really good. Just even, like, the planet Venus. It says the morning star. We know that's, you know, that's, that's the planet Venus. Is that an option? I don't know. Maybe on the other side of, you know, this whole, you know, Jesus coming back and everything else, we'll figure this out and be like, oh, sure enough, there's Venus. That's so and so's. You know? But, you know, it's, you just can't put God in a box, right? Just, you know, no limitations there. Just go from there. Now, I, kind of going in line with previous things said with the Overcomer, I think it has more to do with authority, and a shared authority, especially with Jesus himself identifying as the morning star in chapter 22. I think the whole theme of authority, which probably runs in with Numbers 22, verse, I'm sorry, Numbers 24, verse 17. I think a lot of that kind of dovetails together. And so, it's just a reiteration of the authority that Jesus has, that he's sharing with these Overcomers. And once again, if you really want to tie a nice big bow on this, it's everybody communicating their allegiance to Jesus as the King of kings and Lord of lords, by overcoming, by forsaking the sin that even was present within their church. And so, even those who maybe had participated in, but now are repenting of it and moving on in their allegiance with Christ. Alright, verse 29. No questions about Lucifer, Venus, or anything like that? Not that I'm looking for them, but you know. Okay, alright.
Why would you be promised the devil?
That's a great question. I mean, really, I, I know that like, just by the, and mind you, so, alright, the question is, why would you be promised the devil? And that goes into the interpretation that the morning star, identified with Isaiah 14, like, is referencing Satan, which is assumed. And I know you read it, and you're just like, oh, that's perfect. That's exactly who it is. Probably not written that way, like, with that intent to communicate, right? It was in reference to king of Babylon. And so, so inferring that and drawing from that. Now, why is it being used here? Is this in reference to like a trophy or something like that? I just don't think that fits with the text. Now, I'm, I don't know. Maybe you could stretch that and be like, oh, well, these are the works of the devil. But yet, I think if, you know, Satan, the deep things of Satan, the deep secrets of Satan, and so, all of a sudden, now you have this reemergence of a reference to Satan, "I will give him Satan?" I just, I don't know. I, I think the authority theme fits better. And mind you, that, I guess that would still tie in with authority, but it's just not, it doesn't seem to fit. So, yeah. No, that's a great question, and, and that's, you know, and that's, think outside the box, you know, it's like...
Lucifer, thought, why would I want that?
Why would you want that? That's right. Who wants a roaring lion, you know? So, so the reference was Revelation 1:7? 1:16, he had seven stars. In his right hand. So, with the stars representing the churches, could this star being, could the star represent a church? I don't think so, just because it says the morning star, and that was a very clear reference to, to Venus, to, you know, well, Venus at that time, but then also it becomes a title even for Jesus. So, so I don't think it would fit with one of the churches. Yeah. I, I, and you know, and I would just say, I land on the authoritative part, where it's communicating more of the shared authority that believers would have, the Overcomers would have, sharing with Jesus. Jesus sharing with them, just to be clear. So, alright. Good thoughts, guys. That's great. Alright, verse 29, "He who has an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the churches." So, once again, the exhortation, "to hear what the Spirit says to the churches," is repeated. This same emphasis on hearing and doing also marks the conclusion of Jesus's Sermon on the Mount. "The wise build against the coming storm of judgment by hearing and doing." Matthew, chapter 7, verses 24 and 25. I feel that probably falls right in with what we were talking about before. Alright. Ooh, everybody ready to move on to Sardis? I mean, we're just zooming right through this. Alright, that's right. We just made it to Revelation, chapter 3. Should we quit while we're ahead? No, let's keep going. Alright. So, let's read through this, then we'll look at some pictures, kind of get a visual there. And then we'll, I'll read a little bit of the background to Sardis. So, "To the angel of the church in Sardis write, he who has the seven spirits of God and the seven stars says this. I know your deeds; you have a name; that you are alive; but you are dead. Wake up and strengthen the things that remain, which were about to die; for I have not found your deeds completed in the sight of my God. So, remember what you have received and heard, and keep it, and repent. Therefore, if you do not wake up, I will come like a thief, and you will not know at what hour I will come to you. But you have a few people in Sardis who have not soiled their garments, and they will walk with me in white; for they are worthy. He who overcomes will thus be clothed in white garments, and I will not erase his name from the book of life, and I will confess his name before my Father and before his angels." and I will confess his name before my Father and before his angels. He who has an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the churches.'" All right. Let's take a visual tour of Sardis. So you can see Sardis here to the north and west, just a little bit of Philadelphia. So as we're continuing on this route, kind of moving up the coast, and then now cutting inland from Thyatira up to Sardis. And then after that, we'll be going down to Philadelphia, Hierapolis, Laodicea, and then there's Colosse. There we go. So here is a modern day picture of really what's left of the ruins. And you can see that a lot of these places are just kind of in the backyard or on the outskirts of the modern cities themselves. It's so hard for us to imagine here. You know, and it's really kind of crazy when you go and visit places like that because, you know, you're just in the city and then drive right out. I mean, just like if you were here and heading north on Mar, and all of a sudden you're like in the ancient ruins of the city of Columbus. Right? And it's just, it's, it's amazing. It's beautiful. This is an ancient gymnasium, ginnazium. And I think I have one of the restored pictures. Yep, there you go. So you can just see how massive this complex is. And there's different thoughts, whether it was a ginnazium or it was actually like a central place for commerce. Kind of the political center of Sardis. You see the amphitheater and Hippodrome. So, "The church at Sardis was considered to be alive and well, but actually it was on the point of death. Christ admonishes the congregation to wake up to their perilous condition and take steps to restore their former vitality; otherwise he will visit them unexpectedly in judgment. Those who overcome will have their names in the book of life and stand approved before God." "In the sixth century B.C., Sardis was one of the most powerful cities of the ancient world. Yet by the Roman period it had declined to the point that scholar named Ramsey could describe it as a relic of the period of barbaric warfare, which lived rather on its ancient prestige than on its suitability to present conditions." Wow, that's kind of sad, isn't it? "It was located some fifty miles east of Ephesus, on the northern spur of Mount Timolus, overlooking the broad and fertile plain of the Hermes. So the Acropolis, with its near-perpendicular rock walls rising one thousand five hundred feet above the lower valley on all but the south side, was essentially inaccessible and provided a natural citadel. As Sardis grew, it became necessary to develop a lower city to the north and west of the Acropolis on the banks of the Pactolus, a southern tributary of the Hermes. Excavations in the lower city have unearthed a Roman theater and stadium, as well as an exceptionally large, one hundred and sixty by three hundred feet, temple dedicated to Artemis. Its seventy-eight Ionic columns, of which two are still standing, are each fifty-eight feet in length, or I'm sorry, fifty-eight feet in height. Built on the sixth-century B.C. foundations of an ancient temple constructed by Croesus, it was destroyed by 499 B.C. and reconstructed, but never completely finished in the time of Alexander the Great. It was dedicated to a local Asiatic goddess, usually referred to as Sybil, who was identified with the Greek Artemis. This patron deity was believed to possess the special power of restoring the dead to life." "Sardis was the capital of the ancient kingdom of Lydia, the most obstinate of the foreign powers encountered by the Greeks during their early colonization in Asia Minor. In 546 B.C., it fell to Cyrus and became the seat of the Persian governor. Later it became part of the Seleucid kingdom, then passed to Pergamum, and subsequently to Rome in 133 B.C." "In AD 17, Sardis suffered a catastrophic earthquake, but it was rebuilt with considerable help from the Emperor Tiberius. And it cost ten million sesterces, which is about a million dollars, and five years of tax remission. Nine years later, in AD 26, it competed with ten other Asian cities for the privilege of building an imperial temple, but it lost out to Smyrna, which stressed its practical services to Rome. Situated at the western end of a famous highway from Susa, so that's all the way in Iran, through Asia Minor, Sardis was a city of wealth and fame. Under Croesus, gold was taken from the Pactolus. Jewelry found in the local cemeteries indicates great prosperity. It was at Sardis that gold and silver coins were first struck. It claimed to be the first to discover the art of dying wool. The church at Sardis comes under the most severe denunciation of the seven. Apparently untroubled by heresy and free from outside opposition, it had so completely come to terms with its pagan environment that although it retained the outward appearance of life, it was spiritually dead. Much like the fig tree of Mark, chapter 11, verse 20, it had leaves but no fruit." All right. Are you ready to jump in? So the address in prophetic messenger formula. "To the angel of the church in Sardis write, 'He who has the seven spirits of God and the seven stars says this: 'I know your deeds; that you have a name; that you are alive; but you are dead.'" So. So this is the strength. The first, the second part of verse 1. So the letter to Sardis comes from the one who holds the seven spirits of God and the seven stars. We are reminded that the letter to Ephesus came from the one who holds the seven stars in his right hand. Chapter 2, verse 1. "The seven stars are identified in chapter 1, verse 20, as the angels of the seven churches, but the seven spirits of God are enigmatic at best. Perhaps Ramsey, scholar named Ramsey, is right in his opinion that they must certainly be taken as a symbolic or allegorical way of expressing the full range of exercise of the divine power in the seven churches. Although from chapter 1, verse 4, it would seem that the figure represents some part of a heavenly entourage that has a special ministry in connection with the Lamb." So once again, we're talking about the stars. "So Christ knows their deeds, and there is little to commend. Although they have the reputation of being alive, they are in fact dead. Subsequent verses indicate that while the entire church had not fallen into a state of complete spiritual death, verses 4 and 5, the majority had so fully compromised with the pagan environment that the church was Christian in name only, or nominal, nominally Christian. Like the prodigal son of whom the Father said, 'The Son of Mine was dead,' Luke, chapter 15, verse 24, only by repentance and return could life be restored." Ephesians, chapter 5, verse 14. So here's the solution, verses 2 and 3. "Wake up and strengthen the things that remain, which were about to die; for I have not found your deeds completed in the sight of my God." So the first of the five imperatives in verses 2 and 3 is joined to a participle and should be translated, be watchful, rather than wake up. The exhortations to watchfulness would carry special weight in Sardis because twice in its history, the Acropolis had fallen to the enemy due to a lack of vigilance on the part of the defenders. How cool is that? I just think that's, I mean, like every word matters, right? Every phrase. "In 549 B.C., Cyrus captured the Acropolis by deploying a climber to work his way up a crevice on one of the nearly perpendicular walls of the mountain fortress. Later in the third century, the city was again captured in the same way. A Cretan by the name of Lagarus discovered a vulnerable point, and with a band of fifteen men made a daring ascent, opened the gates from within, and allowed the armies of Antiochus the Great to overpower the rebel Archaus in 216 B.C. As in history, so in life, to consider oneself secure and fail to remain alert is to court disaster." Although the church at Sardis was dead, some things still remained, although on the verge of dying. So even the good thing was like, it's on the verge of dying. Rather than attempting to distinguish what was in fact dead and what could still be saved, it is better to take the two statements as paradoxical. Although Sardis could be pronounced dead, it still had the possibility of restoration. Restoration to life. "The city is to strengthen that which still remains, though it is at the point of death. Christ, who knows their deeds, has not found any of them carried out fully. Like the unfinished temple of Artemis, the works of the church constantly fell short of completion. They lacked the appropriate motivation and spiritual orientation, without which all external activity is morally impotent. The believers at Sardis had established a name for themselves in the eyes of the community. But in God's sight, i.e. from God's point of view, their works had not measured up." Man. I think that last part was from Baker. So. So obviously, there's a very serious problem here. The things they are doing that are in line with God are being found incomplete. They need to shore these things up before they die completely. I don't know about you, but I wish they would have been named. I mean, really. So that would have been super insightful. But maybe it's the mystery that is what challenges us reading this 2,000 years later, right? So that as we're reading this, we're seeing Sardis as just on the verge of death. That which you know that you're doing for the Lord, better put it into overdrive because you've been found incomplete. Man. Verse 3, "So remember what you have received and heard, and keep it, and repent. Therefore, if you do not wake up, I will come like a thief, and you will not know at what hour I will come to you." So the church is called upon to bear in mind, kind of a present imperative, what they had received and heard. The change in tense between have received, perfect, and heard, aorist, is instructive. Members of the church had received the faith as an abiding trust at the moment faith came by hearing. Christ calls on them to remember what they had been taught. So they actually had been taught this, but had left it behind. Like the churches at Ephesus, Pergamum, and later Laodicea, Sardis is told to repent. "The urgent call for conversion in the Epistles of Revelation is based on the prospect of the imminent end, and summons the churches from sin and weakness to the renewal of their former state of life." If the church does not wake up to its perilous position, Christ will come like a thief, meaning unexpectedly, and visit them in judgment. In other New Testament passages, where the coming of Christ or the day of the Lord is said to be like a thief in the night, Matthew, chapter 24, let's go there. I wish you guys could see your face. I don't know if you're bored out of your mind, or it's just like the state of mourning after reading this. It's like, oh, this is really sad. I don't want. Can we, can we get to the positive one? Can we go back to Ephesus? Or Smyrna? Matthew, chapter 24, verses 42 through 44. "Jesus says, 'Therefore be on the alert, for you do not know which day your Lord is coming. But be sure of this, that if the head of the house had known at what time of the night the thief was coming, he would have been on the alert and would not have allowed his house to be broken into. For this reason you also must be ready, for the Son of Man is coming at an hour when you do not think he will.'" Okay, bear with me for a moment. Jesus just said the same thing twice, separated by like 60 years. I think that's pretty cool. I mean, imagine if they had, if they had a copy of Matthew's Gospel.
He said it to him in his revelation.
Oh, no, and John heard it the first time around when Jesus was saying it, yeah.
I guess I was trying to think of things like.
Yeah, so I, I would go, I would lean more towards John actually hearing this himself, and then hearing it a second time, and, and just like at Jesus saying this, like his ears kind of perking up like, oh! I mean, because remember, like what John is seeing, even in a vision, is way different than the Jesus he hung out with on the shores of Galilee. You know, I mean, like, but, you know, there's also those 40 days. So I would be curious to know like what that comparison would be with the 40 days post-resurrection, where Jesus was with the disciples. And what that looked like in comparison with Jesus glorified, right? Glorified body here on earth in this vision, in the presence of God. Sorry, rabbit trail. But, point is, John would have heard this first time around, even as Matthew's recording it. But then if we want to talk about like textual corroboration, where Matthew's recording his gospel, whether it be in Jerusalem or even in Damascus, most early church sources would put this at in Jerusalem before Matthew leaves to go to Damascus. And so would that, how far out would that gospel have, you know, his writing, his record have gotten now? How quickly? By 90 A.D., easily. Like it would have made its way into Asia Minor. So.
So the seven churches could have very well had.
Had a Gospel of Matthew. Yeah, I think so. So. Good question, good. So here we have the whole coming like a thief. Let's also go to 1 Thessalonians, chapter 5. Oh, I just saw what time it was. Man, time flies when you're having fun, right? Okay, so 1 Thessalonians, chapter 5. "Now ask to the times and the epochs, brethren, you have no need of anything to be written to you; for you yourselves know full well that the day of the Lord will come just like a thief in the night." That was 1 Thessalonians, chapter 5, verses 1 and 2. And then 2 Peter, chapter 3. Which I think this is really neat because we have like Matthew writing this or recording this. We have Paul making reference to this, and then now Peter. 2 Peter, chapter 3, zeroing in on verse 10. "But the day of the Lord will come like a thief, in which the heavens will pass away with a roar, and the elements will be destroyed with intense heat, and the earth and its works will be burned up." So either way, as we read this, the reference to a thief is basically the second advent. The second coming of Jesus is completely in view here. And I guess we say that to encompass the visitation upon this church with just Jesus's return, period. So it's not like a specific judgment only on this church. It's when Jesus returns, he's bringing judgment with him on everything, on everyone. "So here, however, some historical visitation must be in mind, since the eschatological coming is not dependent on repentance in Sardis. So when that visitation comes, it will be swift and unexpected. They will not know at what time he will come." And so even though we talk about the broader judgment, where's the church at Sardis? Or even the, just that generation that was there at this time? Alright. Okay, you know what, we can do this. "Promise and challenge to the overcomers." Look, it'll be like a positive note. Chapter 3, verses 4 through 6. "But you have a few people in Sardis who have not soiled their garments, and they will walk with me in white, for they are worthy." So although the majority of the church had become thoroughly secularized, there were a few people who had not soiled their clothes. "It is often noted that since the manufacture and dyeing of wool goods was a principal trade in Sardis, an allusion to soiled clothes would be immediately recognized. It is unlikely, however, that anything more than a general reference to the danger of contaminating the Christian witness by accommodation to the prevailing standards of a pagan city is in mind." So, just compromising with paganism around. Everybody got that, right? Okay, good. "The promise to the undefiled minority is that they will walk with Christ, dressed in white. While this could suggest a reference to Enoch, who walked with God, Genesis 5:22 and verse, uh, verse 22 and verse 24, it is more likely an allusion to the itinerant ministry of Jesus in Galilee." John, chapter 6, verse 66. "In Revelation 7, the great multitude wearing white robes, verses 9 through 10, is led by the Lamb to the springs of living water." Verse 17. "And in chapter 14, the 144,000 follow the Lamb wherever he goes." Verse 4. "In the context of the following verse, where those dressed in white do not have their names blotted out of the book of life, it would appear that walking in white is a way of describing those who are justified. Other possible references are to purity, festivity, resurrection bodies, or the Roman custom of wearing white on the day of triumph. Here, as elsewhere, the author is not limited to our knowledge of possible sources. While background is helpful, it does not determine how a figure must be used or what it may subsequently mean. The faithful at Sardis walk with Christ, dressed in white, for they are worthy. They themselves have done nothing to merit their exalted position, but are worthy in the sense that they have withstood the pressure to apostatize, to betray Christ, and hence have done nothing that would result in forfeiting their position." So I think that's the balance of it. It's not like they did X amount of works to achieve. No, they just didn't sell out. Because remember, they're already saved. They did not compromise, they did not apostatize, they didn't accommodate the pagan culture around them. So by staying pure, they could wear white. They could walk with Jesus. Alright, so we're gonna stop there before we get to white garments and, you know, erasing someone's name from the book of life. We'll save that for next week. So, we'll pick up with verse 5 next week, and yeah, we'll go from there. So I want to thank you guys for coming back, being a part of this. And hopefully, we'll, we'll finish out the churches next week, maybe. Alright, have a great week.